Okay, I will call to order the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for August 6, 2018, and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for our invocation this morning, again, we'll have our Reverend Patrick Bromack come forward.
Morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's pray. Our gracious God, we give you praise, offer you our thanksgiving, as you have blessed us with a beautiful day, that we may look upon the lofty mountain grandeur around us and give thanks that you have made us, created each of us in your image, giving us inherent dignity and worth. Oh, Father, give us hearts filled with gratitude for one another, that even in our differences, we pray that you will guide us together in deliberations and discussions, and guide us, Father, to that destination that will result in the best decisions for those who are governed. Thank you for these commissioners, bless them and their families, provide for each exceedingly abundantly above all that we could ask or think, and we ask that you will bless us and keep us, and cause your face to shine upon us and be gracious unto us, and lift up unto us your countenance, for we pray in your name. Amen.
Next item is a call to public hearing. We've got requests for public hearing on August 20, 2018, at 5:30 in the historic courtroom of the historic courthouse, Waynesville, North Carolina, for approval of economic grant of incentives on an investment of $7.8 million to $9.1 million by SEVA Investments. And David Francis, I'll let you say what that's for.
Good morning, Commissioners. Hope everybody's doing well today. The purpose of the hearing is to consider a proposed economic development agreement with SEVA Investments, LSC, a South Carolina limited liability company. It's to approve the award of incentives, economic development purposes, to increase the population, taxable property, employment, and business prospects of Haywood County. SEVA has been looking at a project for several years. We met with them almost two years ago. Haywood County was in competition with other counties and out-of-state as well, too, to land a prospective flagship hotel here in the county. I began working with hotels back when we started doing the 209 project about landing a flagship hotel out there. Candy helped me work with a restaurant out that way, too. So we've been looking and trying to develop, you know, a brand hotel here. It's one of the things that was identified that we needed to do. So SEVA stepped up to the plate. They're proposing to invest anywhere between $7.8 to $9.1 million in the town of Waynesville off of High Creek Road. Also, in addition to the investment there, it provides sales and occupancy tax of nearly $65,000, and ad valorem tax for the county purposes, not the town, of over $45,000, for roughly about $110,000 annually investment. Air grant back would be 55% of the investment of the ad valorem taxes, not on the sale of occupancy tax, which would be a grant of about $25,000 annually, over five years. So that's what the public hearing is about, is that grant back of that investment of $7.8 million for five years. This process also went through the Economic Development Council, previously, earlier in the summer, and was approved by them, and so we've been working on the agreement over the last couple of months, and have crafted it now to where we feel comfortable moving forward to the public hearing process. But be mindful, this is also one of those things that we've been talking about, is like growing Haywood County, growing from within on our own business retention and expansion. These are entrepreneurs who wanted to, you know, come to Haywood County, stay in Haywood County, and that's one of the reasons that we believe in this project, you know. I've heard, you know, some criticisms, "David, you know, it's not the best jobs," and I agree with that. It is not the best jobs, but it does grow our tax base and it does do, it does provide some jobs, and that's what, you know, was important. We work with them, we feel very comfortable with their business plan. The hotel is gorgeous. It doesn't look like a standard hotel, it's not just a rectangle. It's going to look very, it's going to blend in and look very nice up there, the proposed location.
Since you have anything, Dan?
The only thing that I would like to add is that, and thank David for his assistance with this, is that this project has taken a long time to get to this point today. I know this individual, he's very well respected in the community, and it's nice to see some of our young entrepreneurs want to stay in our community and be a part of our community, which he is. I think this is one of those identified niches that we went after early on. It's a need that we've been, that's been expressed to us for many years now, so I look forward to taking this to public hearing.
All right. Any other questions, Commissioners? You have any questions?
Just got a couple of comments. You know, being on the Economic Development Council, you know, been very involved with this for the long term, and it has been a while, and it's been, you know, this is based on a particular flagship coming in, and that will determine, you know, and if in fact it is that, then this incentive will take place, if we approve that.
Yep. The agreement's written to where it has to be that particular flagship. It's just not a broad stroke. It can be this, that, or the other. At the meeting on September 4th, we will reveal at that time who the flagship is at that time.
It's an opportunity to have something that a lot of people look for when they're traveling or coming into an area to stay, and then, you know, we need, and David, you hit on that, but the investment in the county for long-term really helps, you know, us manage the tax base when you have a new investment coming into the county.
Yes, you know, I think I mentioned it one other time that we're talking, you know, the broader we make our tax base, we invest in commercial, industrial, you know, slowly that starts taking pressure off the tax rate, the more we can broaden our base, you know. And a hotel doesn't impact, you know, with schools, you know, where you have to have an immediate need, you know, I was reading where, you know, a company came in and here, you know, add two new schools. So, you know, this, you know, we can move slowly through this, and we, and one of the things that we talk about is growing slowly in the county, nothing just suddenly that impacts everything down line. We have to add, add, and add, and add, which some of the counties have, when they all of a sudden have some big new industry come in, you know, they have to, you know, impacts down line, so.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions? All right, so we will have a public hearing on August 20, 2018, at 5:30 in regards to the grant of incentives for this investment of either, of $7.8 million to $9.1 millions by SEVA Investment for a 65-room hotel. Schedule that then. Okay, thank you. Okay, I appreciate it. Next, we have a public comment session. I don't have anyone signed up. Does anyone like to come forward for a public comment this morning? All right, if not, we'll move to constituent concerns. Brandon, I'll start with you this morning.
No, I've had a few, but we've taken care of those, so.
Okay. Bill, you have any?
I'd like to mention we'll have a litter pickup, and you guys are invited. We're going to do hospital drive from Tuscaloosa down to HCC. We're going to meet at Mountain Medical, 9 o'clock Saturday morning. If you have nothing to do Saturday morning, come join us.
All right, 9 o'clock Saturday morning, wherever they meet, Mountain Medical?
Mountain Medical, that's about halfway, so.
Okay.
Picking up around your school.
That's right. I know, I'm impressed with that. Thank you for that, Bill. Kevin?
I've had several over the weekend. I've been in contact with county manager and a couple of people, our staff members, and we're working on them. Kind of got bombarded, I think, so, anyway, but we're working.
All right. Next, we have administrative agency reports. We've got introduction of new county employees. Joel Mashburn?
Today, we have several employees to introduce, however, this is a report for two months. We didn't just get all of these employees this month. We were not able to do this last month. So, we will ask the employees, as they're introduced, if they will please stand and stay standing until all of you are introduced, and we will go by departments. And the first is Health and Human Services, and I think Kimberly Smith was not able to be here. That's a social worker in the Health and Human Services. Bill Guy, a social worker. Andrea Brown, accounting tech. Deanna Owen, not able to be here. Hannah Gosnell, Community Employment Case Manager. And then, with the Sheriff's, and just stay standing, please. In the Sheriff's Department, we have Anna Pope, telecommunicator. Autumn Freeman, detention officer. Erin Herbertson, detention officer. And Brennan Mahaffey, a deputy. And appears we were not able to get most of these, may very well be on duty this morning and not able to leave, but if you would pass along that they were introduced. And then, Technology and Communications, we have two new employees there. Scott Boone, computer systems administrator, and John Cardwell, computer support technician. Commissioners, these are the new employees for the county for the last two months. Like to introduce them to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joel. Well, we certainly appreciate you joining Haywood County and appreciate your services, all of you. I do, I've known one of you, known him a long time, but the county certainly appreciates that, and we would like, we'd just like to recognize you and introduce you to the rest of the county. We're trying to, I think we have a newsletter going out each month, and we're just trying to create a little more cohesiveness and recognition of each other within the county, at least. Commissioners, you have anything? All right, thank you so much for joining us. And you can, if you want to go now, you're more than welcome to go if you need to go. All right, next is Cooperative Extension 4H Youth Development Program presentation. Let's see, Coley Bartholomew, our North Carolina Cooperative Extension agent, will be introducing Ashlyn Clark.
Good morning. I'm Coley Bartholomew with the Haywood County 4H Youth Development Program, and like you said, I'd like to introduce one of our star 4Hers, Ashlyn Clark, and she's been a member of the Haywood County 4H for the past eight years, and she's been very active in public speaking, the Teen Leadership Council, and citizenship. Ashlyn's developed a strong interest in political science and researching social issues, which has led to her being selected in a competitive selection process to be the Haywood County 4H Youth Delegate for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Youth Summit 2018. And today, she would like to share about her 4H experience, and I'll turn it over to Ashlyn.
Thank you, Mrs. Bartholomew, for that kind introduction. Good morning. I'd like to start by thanking the board members for allowing me the opportunity to speak this morning. It is a true honor to be here. As already mentioned, my name is Ashlyn Clark, and I am currently the Secretary for the 4H Teen Leadership Council of Haywood County. When considering what I wanted to speak to you all about today, I had several ideas come to mind. One of those ideas included discussing issues that youth in Haywood County are currently struggling with. After considering that option, I realized I probably wouldn't be telling you anything you didn't already know, so instead, I have chosen to discuss the many benefits of the 4H youth programs. You see, it doesn't really help to discuss youth struggles unless I can also suggest a way to help. I moved to Waynesville in 2009 from the suburbs of Charlotte. I was eight years old, homeschooled, and didn't know anyone in this area. I was shy, yet wanted to meet friends and find activities that I enjoyed. My mother came across an advertisement for a camp called Farm to Fork, sponsored by the local 4H Co-op office. I wasn't exactly sure what it meant, except that there would be other children, and I might get to pet a cow or two. Count me in. Little did I know that that one camp would forever change my life. Following camp, my mother enrolled my brothers and I into every 4H program she could find. We learned how to sew, cook, use proper table etiquette, proper gun safety, write a resume, how to interview for a job, give public speaking presentations, become leaders. And the best part, we made a lot of friends. To some people, those may seem like minor things, but for me, they have helped shape the person I am today. One of the many struggles plaguing youth society are anxiety disorders. What you may not realize is that I, too, have that same struggle. However, due to many opportunities and training through 4H, I have no problem speaking before you today. In fact, you can frequently find me onstage at the Hart Theater. In the eight years that I have been a member of 4H, I have given multiple presentations, starting with how to care for a cat, to, most recently, the environmental effects of commercial farming. I have by no means overcome my struggle with anxiety, but I have learned to cope and thrive in spite of it. My time in the sewing club not only led me to work on fun projects, but also make award-winning dresses and a few walks down the runway. Not only have I become the family seamstress, but I also have been known to create my own costumes, as well as assist in costume for community theater. That's a life skill that I will carry with me forever. I'm guessing most people think of farming when they think of 4H, but there is so much more. I mean, sure, I could recite a few facts about farming and agriculture, but it wouldn't begin to tell you about the life knowledge and experiences that I have required over the eight years, and it wouldn't begin to tell you about the camps that I've attended and would eventually help lead, and it wouldn't tell you about the amazing trips I've been on and the fun I've had. From book clubs to leadership summits to cooking to formal etiquette dinners, there isn't much that hasn't been covered. I've worked with electricity, planted gardens, practiced archery, hiked, and, yes, pet a cow or two. I can't think of a single area of my life that 4H hasn't benefited from. I'm capable, confident, knowledgeable in many areas, and have memories that will last a lifetime. Another point worth mentioning is that almost every activity and club is either free or low cost, and one thing that I've learned in my time in Haywood County is that there are children who simply cannot afford to play sports or dance, but they can all afford to participate in 4H. In a couple of weeks, I will head to Hickory to represent Haywood County in the North Carolina Youth Voice Summit. I couldn't be brighter to call this my home. It is my hope that through telling others about experiences, that it will shine a broader light on the importance of the 4H program, as well as reaching out to youth in our community. This isn't just about making an impact on youth where they are today, but even more importantly, where they will be tomorrow. Going forward, it will be my goal to get the word out about this untapped treasure so that more youth will get to experience the opportunities that my brothers and I did. I hope I have inspired you all to do the same. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ashlyn. Appreciate your speech. I don't know if we, you might have any questions of Ashlyn?
I just whittled a speech, and you wrote all that out yourself. Great job.
And Ashlyn, did we, did you say what year she was and what school? She's a junior?
Homeschooled.
And she's, okay. Okay, she's a junior and she's homeschooled. Well, you're doing a very good job. I guess this is her mother here with her this morning. All right.
She don't look like she's proud or nothing.
We, I just wanted to comment, you know, 4H is a great program, and we at all school, part of our kids' education was homeschooling. She kind of reminded me of that, so I appreciate y'all doing that.
All right. Well, thank you for that, and thank you for the information about 4H again. We appreciate you. Next, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Joel Mashburn has a presentation for us.
Mr. Chairman, I'm coming to the speaker's stand for that. Each year, the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States presents to deserving finance departments a certificate that is awarded to departments for their outstanding reporting and financial reporting and achievement. I asked Julie if she would want me to present this to her today, and she said, "Not really, because it really belongs to the employees of the department." This is an Award of Financial Reporting Achievement to the Finance Department of Haywood County, and it reads briefly as follows. "The Award of Financial Reporting Achievement is presented by the Government Finance Officers Association to the individuals," and that's in plural, "designated as instrumental in their government unit achieving a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. A certificate of achievement is presented to those government units whose annual financial reports are judged to adhere to program standards and represents the highest award in government financial reporting." And it presented, actually, was awarded on July 16 of 2018. So I'm going to present this to Julie on behalf of her department, but I would like for her to also introduce her staff that is with us this morning. Julie?
Thank you. This is definitely a group effort, and I have a fantastic team that's with me today. They're right here. You can stand up if you don't mind. This is Kelly Mossar, and Peggy Cope, Christian Owen, Diane Fitzgerald, and Vicky Kegel. We are, we are missing one. Lindsey Hatherley is on vacation today.
Okay.
And these are the ones that are going to help to do the financial report this year that I hope we will get another certificate for.
All right. Commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you all for what you do, and thank you for making Haywood County a financially stable county. Okay.
If there's one department, we don't have to worry about its finance. I appreciate that. And that's probably the most important as a taxpayer, yeah.
And thank you for keeping us out of trouble, keeping us straight. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to echo what Kevin said, you know, as we've been interviewing county managers, we keep talking about finance, and I think one common theme is we don't have to worry about our finance department, so thank you for what you do.
Thank you for that.
We do appreciate it very much, and, you know, you've received, I think this is probably-
Several years in a row, huh?
At least. How many years in a row? I mean, it seems like every year.
The county has received this 22 years. I've been here 18 of those 22 years.
Okay, and it's been received the last 18 years?
Yes.
Yeah, sometimes it's hard to get excited when you win the same thing over and over.
It's expected.
It's expected, it's part of the-
Yeah. You set a high standard.
If we were Bunkin County, we would, we would be excited.
Yeah, you would be excited if you were in Bunkin County. And you may avoid jail. All right, well, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, I don't think we have any adjustment to the agenda this morning, or any discussion about any manner, do we, before we get into the consent agenda? All right, so we'll move to the consent agenda, and first is request approval of July 16, 2018, regular meeting minutes, and the July 25th and 30th special meeting minutes. Does anyone have any changes or corrections to those? All right, next is request approval of budget amendment. Julie Davis, our finance director, has an amendment for Health and Human Services.
And good morning again. This is just one budget amendment that I have. This is a grant that was given to the Health and Human Services Department for their WIC program. The amount is $5,515. It's a combination of federal and state funds.
Okay, Commissioners, have any questions about this? You sure nobody's got any questions about that?
Sure.
All right. I had some questions when we were reviewing the agenda, it's about what that is, but at any rate.
Our chairman's sharp smarter than I was.
Okay, all right, that's it for the consent agenda. If there's no questions or changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Okay, next, we'll go to old business. We've got Jeff Haynes, Chief Deputy Jeff Haynes with us this morning regarding an approval to amend the contract with their attorney, David Weeje Wickerama, which we approved a couple of weeks ago. Jeff?
Good morning, Commissioners. What I bring to fore you today is the revision of a contract for the upcoming fiscal year, which we're currently in. There's absolutely no change to the sum total of the amount paid out, but there were some language changes agreed upon by David Weeje Wickerama and also our county attorney, Chip Killian, as well, too. So it's just a language change, no financial change whatsoever, so seeking acceptance of that contract.
Okay. Chip, you're okay with this?
Yes, I am. This is something Julie and I talked about. The original contract had his status as that of an employee. He had not been, had that status previously, and Julie felt that it was more appropriate for him to be an outside contractor, which he had always been in the past. The sheriff had agreed with this, and David agreed with this.
Okay, yeah, that is important. I'm glad we, okay. Commissioners, have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended contract for renewal for legal services rendered by Attorney David Weeje Wickerama for the Haywood County Sheriff's Department.
I'll move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
And you're still here, so, okay. Now we go to new business. First is request approval of disbursement of $1,300 to the town of Waynesville and the Waynesville Police Department from seizure of monies from illegal gambling.
Good morning once again, Commissioners. What this issue is, and I bring before you today, is the dispersment of the portion of the illegal gambling sales during an operation, actually, multiple operations that occurred this last year, both calendar year of '17 and '18, in regards to some drug, or, excuse me, some video gaming cases. And in that, the money that was seized and court-ordered back to the sheriff of the county under general statute, it goes back to the county. We're requesting that a portion of that $1,300 of that, which was actually seized inside the city limits for operations, with inside the city limits, be dispersed back to the town of Waynesville for their efforts as well, too.
So, Jeff, this was a multi-jurisdictional program or agreement that you all worked together and then seize these monies together so they're going back to the different departments?
That's correct. It was actually an operation conducted by the unit, which you're familiar with, which is our unified narcotics investigative team, which is a multi-jurisdictional task force, and they were in play with it. So there were, there were law enforcement officers from a variety of different agencies to include Waynesville Police Department, the two primary being the sheriff's office and the Waynesville Police Department.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, have any questions about this?
Just a comment that I appreciate you working with the other towns. Anytime we have something, it seems like, I think we have some of the best law enforcement in any county, really, and y'all working together, which is great. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the dispersment of the $1,300 to the town of Waynesville from seizure of monies from illegal gambling as represented by Chief Deputy Jeff Haynes.
So move.
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next is request approval of hazardous weather communication plan. Zach Koontz, our Emergency Services Operations Officer, and Cody Parton, our Assistant Coordinator here with that. Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to allow us to come before you and tell you of one of the many things that we've been working on in our department. Our mission statement with Haywood County Emergency Services, provide the citizens with preparedness, incident management, and quality medical care. To achieve that preparedness goal inside emergency management, work on many plans to prepare for disasters inside the county that may occur, either be man-made or natural disasters. To help fund our department, we receive emergency management performance grants. These grants are provided to the, to the local, to our county here through the state, which comes through the Department of Homeland Security through the federal government. One of the things to achieve this emergency management performance grants that we chose this year was to receive our storm-ready certification. This certification would, is provided to us through the National Weather Service, and it says that our county is ready for storms if they were to hit us, and that we know how to communicate and deal with disastrous weather. I'm going to turn it over to Cody Parton, he's going to present to you our hazardous weather plan, and that plan was one of the key puzzles of getting and receiving our storm-ready certification.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. We worked in collaboration with all of the towns, as well as our local emergency planning committee as well. It was a group effort in order to come up with this plan right here. We just briefly discovered there's weather monitoring and weather-
We just briefly discovered there's weather monitoring and weather dissemination as far as warning, and alerting the public and everything. So overall, it just basically covers everything that we're already doing, but it's a more formalized plan. It puts it into place, allows all the citizens and everything like that to be a little bit better protected, keeps all of the towns and the county on the same plan and everything like that, which was unanimously approved throughout the town, as well as the local emergency planning committee as well.
When you prepared this plan, were all of the departments involved in that?
Well, we prepared the plan, and we presented it to our local emergency planning committee, which has representation from everywhere.
Right.
And then I took it to each individual town as well, and spoke with each individual town, and some of them had to have board approval from the Board of Alderman from their towns as well. So we had a large collaboration. It was over several months in order to get this formalized.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions?
Just a comment, and I'm glad that we are proactive instead of reactive. So it's good to know that we're preparing for things, as we know they're going to happen. So we appreciate all the work that's put in. I know, being involved, a little myself, that there's a lot of time and effort put into this, so thank you for doing that.
With all the catastrophes that go on in the areas around us and wherever, we've been very fortunate, but this enables us to be proactive if we do face something like that.
Yeah, we've been very fortunate.
Okay. Well, thank you, Cody, and thank you, Zach. And with that, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the hazardous weather communication plan as presented this morning.
No move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is request approval of EMS housing. Travis Donaldson, our Deputy Director, has three leases we need to approve, one with Maggie Valley, one with Arrowhead Cove or Silver Bluff, and the other one with the Clyde, the town of Clyde.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. I have before you this morning the three lease agreements, affiliation agreements, between Maggie Valley Fire Department, Arrowhead Cove, also known as Silver Bluff, and the town of Clyde, who's allowing us to use some facilities there temporarily for some housing. There is an increase from our previous lease amounts. We've come up to more of a fair market value, so to speak, before, I think we were paying $3,800 to Maggie Valley and Silver Bluff annually. We took that to $6,000 for this lease agreement to be more of a fair amount that we felt.
Okay. So in Maggie Valley, you're utilizing a single bay, as well as 24/7/365 living quarters, is that right?
Correct.
And that's a one-year lease, $500 a month?
Yes. Paid annually, yeah.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, have any questions about that lease?
No, just for information purposes, this just allows the response time to be much less by being able to be in particular communities, outlet and communities.
Correct. This is areas of the community where these trucks are stationed at and run out of.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the lease with Maggie Valley Fire and Rescue with Haywood County, an amount of $6,000 annually.
No move. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. The next one is for an ambulance at Silver Bluff Nursing Home Facility, and you've had that for six years now, Travis?
Correct.
Okay. And it's a single bay, as well as 24/7/365 living quarters, is that right?
Correct.
Provides coverage to Canton, Bethel, and Crusoe.
Yes, sir.
And this is the same lease that we've had in the past?
It's same lease, just renewing.
Commissioners, have any questions about this particular lease before we approve it? Affiliation agreement. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the lease between Haywood County and Arrowhead Cove or Silver Bluff, in the amount of $6,000 annually, to be paid from the EMS budget.
No move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. And then the last lease is the one with the town of Clyde. So you have, now we're leasing space. We cannot lease it in the Clyde Fire Department, so we're leasing space at the town hall?
Yep. That is no cost.
Okay. And is that, that's not living space, that's just?
That's an area for them to be at during the day, to be in that response area.
Okay.
There's no overnight living quarters. It's a room with a couple chairs and a computer and the essentials.
And I guess that, at all of these places, they have a place to hook the EMS vehicle up to whatever they need to charge it?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the affiliation agreement between the town of Clyde and Haywood County, allowing us to store or hold an EMS vehicle.
No move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. Next is request approval of purchase of two Ford F-150 trucks from Taylor Ford for the inspections Department, in the amount of $48,000. Bruce Crawford, our inspections Director is here with us.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
I am requesting approval of $48,000 for two new Ford F-150 pickups from Taylor Ford, one of which will replace 2007 Ford Ranger pickup we have that has 150,000 miles and transmission issues, and the other one will be for a new employee that we hope to have within the next month or so.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions about these vehicles? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the purchase of two Ford F-150s, an amount of $48,000, from Taylor Ford for inspections.
No move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. And Bruce, if you don't, I hate to put you on the spot, and I hope maybe somebody said something to you about it, but could you give us a little update on inspections and building permit requests? Because I know that the volume has increased.
The volume has increased. We are up somewhere between 35 and 40 percent year over year. I'm not sure exactly how the next year is going to be, but if it continues, I think we're going to have a fairly good year. Right now, according to most of the contractors, they have more work than they have people to do the work.
Right.
So that's one thing, we need more people to work. But things are looking well. According to environmental health, which usually is an indicator of inspections in the future, they're really busy and doing a lot of new septic systems and that type of things, so.
Right. As far as the inspections department, you're adding a new employee?
That's correct.
Okay. Will that help in being able to-
Yes.
-make these inspections?
Definitely. My office right now is in my vehicle, so.
Okay. Well, that's a good sign for the county. Any questions, Bruce?
I'd just like to make a comment that even though you guys are really busy and backed up, you're really, really working hard to accommodate people out there and getting these inspection done. We've got a little bit of experience with one going on right now, and very, very good to respond to what's needed as quickly as possible. So we really appreciate that.
Thanks.
Okay, I approved what we needed to approve. Thank you, Bruce. Next is request approval of appointment of Virginia Boyer for an initial one-year term to the Adult Care Community, Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee for Long-Term Care. Joel?
Mr. Chairman, I have a letter from Larry Reeves, who is the Ombudsman for Region A, Southwestern Commission for Long-Term Care, recommending that the county commissioners appoint Virginia Boyer to an initial one-year term as a member of the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee for Long-Term Care. Ms. Boyer has completed her orientation and has been properly designated as the State Long-Term Care Ombudsman, and is, or designated by the State Long-Term Care Ombudsman for appointment to this position, and is being recommended.
Commissioners, have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Virginia Boyer to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee for Long-Term Care, as requested by Joel Mashburn and also Larry Reeves.
No move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Okay. Anyone else have anything for open session before we go into closed session? All right, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11A6, which is personnel.
No move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and we are in closed session, and I do not anticipate any action. All right, we are back after closed session. Do we have anything else for open session? No? All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
No move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
We are adjourned.